Hey, good evening and welcome to the Planning Board Agenda Meeting for September 14. My name is Kim Crowe, I'm Vice Chair. Our Chair Erin Joyce is unable to make it this evening, so be trying to make my way through the meeting on her behalf in her absence. So we'll start out with thanks for your patience, a couple of minutes late this evening, but we'll start off with some of the old and new business. And now, Ms. Santucci Rossi, are there any introductions that I should be giving as far as the open meeting and running virtually? I wasn't 100% sure about what I should do.
Madam Chair, if you would like to take attendance by roll call vote, so we can establish the members that are here that are present. And then, if you want to turn it back to me real quick for a few seconds, I can just go over the kind of the 4-on-1 related to Zoom and how to comment tonight.
Okay, great. All right, so we will start with attendance. All right, Member McCamey?
Here.
And Member Downey? Member Downey?
Sorry, here.
And Member Grove?
Here.
Member Ken?
I am here.
All right, and Vice Chair Crowe is here. Ms. Santucci Rossi, can we get us started here?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So this evening, we are obviously on Zoom format. As you can see on the agenda, we have some notes here. If you'd like to comment, and you've joined us via the Internet to use the webinar, you can use the Raise Your Hand function, and you'll be recognized when we are taking public comment. If you are on the webinar platform this evening and you have called in, you can use the *9 feature on your phone, and that will raise your hand and we will call on you. Also, you can call the office. Ken Kirkland, our Assistant Director, is going to be monitoring his phone. He's at 781-794-8232. Any questions? And then also, he can be emailed at kirkland, which is K-I-R-K-L-A-N-D@braintreeMA.gov, and email in any questions. When the public parent, public comment period comes for any of these hearings, we will make sure that we're monitoring the phone and the email in the event that somebody would like to provide comments outside of the Raise Your Hand and the *9 functions. And just as a point of reference, as noted by Acting Chair Crowe, Erin Joyce is not here this evening. Member Kent, our alternate, will be acting and voting capacity of full member in the event that we vote on any applications this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a little bit of time before the public hearings start at 6:15. So we could start with the old-new business, with the September zoning Board of Appeals recommendations. Mr. Murphy, could you give us the updates on those applications?
Absolutely. So, can you kill your mic? Awesome. So, Petition Number 21-21, 190 Grove Street. Description: Applicant seeks a variance to construct a three-story addition to the single-family dwelling, as the addition will have a front yard setback of 19.6 feet, 20 feet is required, and a side yard setback of 7.8 feet or 10 feet is required. Recommendation: Staff is recommending approval conditions. And I will present the site plan, just one second, please. Let me know if everyone can see.
Yes.
Awesome. Not here. Yep. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions, but pretty straightforward what they're requesting.
All right, thank you. And I'll ask the members of the board if they have any comments. Clerk McCamey, any comments?
Thank you. So Connor, they're going to knock down the entire house and then put up this new project? And the other thing, I just want to confirm the height requirement.
So, they're actually maintaining the single-family dwelling that's there. They're proposing an addition to it. It's the dark gray box to your right when looking at the screen. The single-family will be maintained. They're adding a garage on the ground floor, and then a first floor that will tie into the living space on the first floor of the single-family dwelling. And then, a second floor, which would be considered as the third floor, which will tie into the bedrooms and bathrooms on the second floor of the house.
Okay, and it meets the height requirement limit?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Member Downey, any comments?
No, I have none.
Okay, Member Grove?
Yes ma'am. Connor, what's the proximity to the Verasso, it's next door?
In proximity to their single-family structure there?
Yep.
I do not have that information in front of me, sir.
Okay. I may come, I may come back in a minute, Madam Chair, and I'm trying to find it in Google Maps.
Okay, I will ask Alternate Kent, or Member Kent tonight, if he has any, any comments.
So the Verassos delivered a letter of support of this, or are they aware of this?
They've made contact with the Verassos. They are currently living down Florida right now. So they're kind of in and out about it. I have talked with the applicant, and they have shown me that they've made contact, but I've asked for a letter and I've yet to see one.
Right, okay. And then the other side of the lot is, looks like it's a boulder or an outcropping or something, so that's, that's not an option?
No, that, I made those comments before. Given the orientation of the existing driveway, they're looking to maintain that. They are proposing some grading that they will need to come before the Planning Board for. And we're working with the applicant on that as well. But I did ask about the rear of the structure, to the other side of the structure, something to be, you know, they could have a building permit by now if they did that, reducing the size as well. But for a standard two-car garage and what they're proposing, it necessitates it.
And?
Multiple.
I'll just, I'll come back to Member Grove, but I'll just mention I don't have any comments. And Member Grove, were you ready with any additional questions?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve the Planning Department recommendation on this application?
I'll move, I'll move that, please.
So moved by Member McCamey, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Member Downey. All right, Mr. Murphy, can you describe the next petition, 21-22?
We need to vote on that.
Oh, you're right, sorry. Jumped to that one, all right. Votes in favor. Clerk McCamey?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you.
Some. Petition, next petition is Petition Number 21-22, 40 Sampson Street. The applicant is seeking a finding to extend the pre-existing non-conforming use of a two-family dwelling. The applicant also seeks a variance and/or find a construct a two-story addition to the pre-existing non-conforming structure, as the addition will have a rear yard setback of 10 feet where 30 feet is required. Let me pull up the plot plan real quick. I believe you all can see it, it's a little big.
All right, and I will get comments from the board. Clerk McCamey?
Sure, thank you. I didn't see any of the architecturals, but Connor, is this addition, is it going to be, it's going to be over both dwellings, so essentially, both units are going to be expanded?
No, they're actually, if you were looking at Sampson Street, you'll see a porch, you'll see existing two-story dwelling. That's the footprint of current two-family dwelling. They're expanding the footprint to the back. You'll see where it says garage to be removed. That's the footprint, new addition.
Okay, and it will stay a two-family?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Member Downey?
Connor, how far is that garage? What's the setback there now?
It's existing at 3.8 feet, so the, it's a detached garage.
So it'll actually be a bigger setback with this?
Correct. So the, I'd just like to clarify that the garage is an accessory structure, so they're by right allowed to be five feet off of property line, excluding the yards. So, I mean, sure, that setback would be improved, and it's a little bit wider than in the garage, but yeah.
Yeah, okay, I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you, Member Grove.
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, and Member Ken?
Looks here like all the parking will be outdoors on the lot.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would just like to, sorry to interrupt you, Member Ken. I would just like to add that we're working with the applicant on the parking. It most likely won't be within the front yard there, it'll be more to the side of the property. But they will meet the required parking, the required four spaces.
Okay. So there'll be no underneath garage or anything like that, it'll be all surface?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. And I was happy to see the better support letters in the package that were included. And I just had the same comment with the garage structure being taken down in that area also, so I don't have any comments on it. Do we have a motion to approve the Planning Department recommendation?
Come on.
And a second?
All second.
Okay, and all votes in favor? Member McCamey?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
No.
Okay. Member Ken?
Yes.
And I, Vice Chair Crowe is yes, thank you.
Awesome. That is it for this month. Thank you very much, members of the board, Chairman.
Thanks Connor.
All right, thank you. And my clock has 6:15. Director Santucci Rossi, should we move on to the public hearings and come back to the remaining old-new business afterward?
Yeah, that's, that's totally fine, yep, that works for me.
All right, so we will start with grading permit file number 21-12. This is 42 Hayward Street. It's a continued application. I'll first ask for a presentation by the applicant and his team to introduce themselves and let us know where we're at. And then, this is a public hearing, so I'll ask for comments from the board members and then from the public. As Director Santucci Rossi said at the outset, you can raise your hand if you are on the Zoom, or dial *9 if you're on the telephone to comment on this.
Hello, good evening, my name is Chi Man from Party Pusman Design Group. The civil engineer representing the, my client, John Liu, on this project. At the last hearing, first of all, I'd like to ask the permission to share my screen. I can pull up the prints.
Yes, you should be able to do that, I believe.
At the last hearing, we made the presentations to the board and also and we yet had to go back to conservation for some revisions. And since that, we again met with the Conservation Commissions, and actually last week, we got our other conditions. We're working with the Conservation Commissions. What they asked us to do is to pull, to remove any field that was praised within the 25-foot buffer zone. So that's what we did on the revised plan, pull, to show, remove all those fill material from the 25-feet no-touch buffer zone. And then gradually, to read one slope back up to the driveway. So the driveway, the edge of the driveway now shown is much closer to what it was before, around like these locations. And then in additions, the Commission has asked us to, we have designed a stone swell right here to intercept the runoff coming down from the slope here. The Commission has asked us to extend that stone swell, so we can increase more invitrations. In additions, on the, under the proposed deck, the Commission asked us to make sure that's three-inch of crushstone underneath the deck, so that can also absorb more water, rainwater runoff, and we did that. And other requests from the Conservation Commission is to change our planting a little bit. They like to see more variety, so we add two more thesis. The number of print is the same on the slope where we propose on, for the restoration, but we add in more variety of different planting material. That's pretty much what we did to comply with the Conservation Commissions. And in additions, last hearing, the board has asked us to look at way to further reduce the runoff. So what we did was we looked for suitable downspout location, and we are now proposing two rain barrels. We have a picture on the, on the detail sheet, it's a 50-gallon rain barrel. I think rain barrel for, we talked about crime rain barrel is going to be more sustainable solution to reduce the rate, the runoff. For our crime, it can be used to water for, for landscape use. So it's, it's a much more sustainable solution. And that's pretty much all the changes we did between the last hearing and this hearing. And I believe we have addressed all the concern from the Commissions and the board members. If there's, I'm open up for any questions.
Thank you. And Director Santucci Rossi, are there any updates from the Planning Department on this application?
If I may, through the chair, the planning staff has issued draft conditions. I hooked up with Kelly post-conservation, just to kind of see. We had talked about dry wells and potentially diverting runoff and things to the impervious, excuse me, the pervious paved areas. And seemed like the Conservation Commission had a couple of other ideas, which Chi covered in his presentation. And I've also included in the draft conditions, the conditions about extending the swell, which I see, hold on, I'm putting my glasses on, I'm sorry, my eyesight is, is terrible, but extending the swell, thank you Chi, behind the house, beyond the patio, and making sure that that ties in appropriately, removing the fill, having the rain barrels there, and as well as just a few, removing the material, the fill out of the 25, altered a little bit some of the items that were discussed in the grading report. So we're just asking for an updated grading report and an updated operations and maintenance plan, just to make sure that the property owner is aware of the different requirements onsite. Actually was out at the site today. And things look okay, but it looks, you know, it's like, okay, let's, you know, let's move along here with the permitting, so he can, he can finish it up. You know, the driveway's gravel, it's kind of dusty, and you know, kind of, you can start to see it pushing out a little. So I think the improvements will do nothing but actually improve the property, both for access to the homeowner. It's a fairly long windy driveway, and while they have done, you know, some disturbing in the 25, and it's still very wooded out there, and still very, very, the house is set back off the street, so it is, it is very private, and frankly, a very nice piece of property, but not a lot of usable sort of yard area. So it's nice to see the extension of the deck proposed, as well as the patio on the far end. As you can see from the plans, the slope in the back is pretty much coming right down at the house. And then you've got the house, and then they just keep going down to the wetlands. So I think that if the sta, if the board, excuse me, is inclined to move forward this evening, staff's recommending approval with the conditions is drafted, and these have been provided to the applicant as well as Chi. And I'm not sure if he has any other comments about them or concerns about them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we, I have revealed the conditions with my client. We just have a couple questions or comments. Number one is, I forgot which item is every, the board, the condition asked for us to create easement for the, for this, for the town. We just want to know how are we going to go above that? We can provide a plan, but I think it's going to be the town. The town solicitor is going to draft all the documents for our client to authorize.
Yeah, if I may, through the chair, I think Chi, I think that's something that we can work on together. I think it's, it's, it's both insurance for the property owner, having that easement in place and having sort of some parameters around that, so the town doesn't go in and just, you know, blow the whole thing up. And we can coordinate that work. There might actually even be a form, like a form easement that the, that the folks over at DPW have, but we can make sure that, you know, the appropriate people on our end, we don't expect the applicant to take into the whole undertaking of the easement and all that stuff. But the plan obviously is something that, you know, we would need, we would need in order to make sure that that's, you know, in the right location, and then we can have an instrument. So we would help whatever's needed to make sure that that's done.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we work with, with the town, with the the appropriate language that, you know, he's putting in a very expensive paper system on the driveway. So, you know, if the town has to come in, they will restore it to the, you know, the conditions. And the second condition that we have question on is, I think, on the timeline, I think the condition required the work to be done by May 31, 2022.
Do you need more time?
I think our client is asking for more time, probably like 18 months. He's going to work, first work, work, work on the slope and stay by the slope, but for the financial reason, he's going to take his time to finish off the deck and the patio in the back.
Okay.
So, we'd like to ask for 18 months.
I don't have a problem with that, if the board doesn't have a problem with that, that's, and I'll make a note about the easement.
All right, so we had now September, so.
Would be like almost a full year, yeah. Would be like March 23, is that what you're thinking?
Or 23, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, by the time we get the contractors getting into the winter almost, so might not even start the work this year, so.
I think there was a few other things that were carried over from the Commission too. There were some timeframes about getting the pipe cleaned up and set appropriately and whatnot. So as long as that, you know, as, as he's in a holding pattern and was, you know, doing things, it is expensive, doing things little by little and whatnot, that we make sure that the drainage is, is going where it should go in, in the interim, until the project is completed. So I'm comfortable with the 18 months.
Yeah.
Like I said, if the board is.
When it start, the work is going to start with, you know, removing the fill and all those, which is going to expose the drainage pipe and clean that up. So that's going to be the first phase.
Okay, all right, so I'll see if the members of the board have any comments. Clerk McCamey?
Thank you. So if we're going to have a, an extension, you know, obviously, there's a lot of components to this project. Is there going to be a construction plan then, in terms of what Mr. Man just said? We're going to start with this, what's going to come second, and so, so on and so forth? Is that going to be submitted, Melissa, or how do we handle that?
Um, do you want to know like what's going to be done in the timeframes? We can get.
Yeah, no, the pri, yeah, the priorities, what's going to come first, make sure it fits everything, right?
Okay, so I've asked for an updated grading report, and I think you can just add that in there, Chi, that's fine.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. And the trench in the back there, that's all brand new, right? That, yeah, that, the foot, the
Yes.
Is that, is that all new, or is there something existing there now?
No, there was a new stone trench. But it was ended approximately where my courtesy is, where the proposed patio and Conservation asked us to extend to the end of the proposed patio, I believe. So the, the stone trench, the trench drain is new.
Got it, okay, that, that was, that was my question. So, so that, that should help with the drainage. Okay, I don't have any other questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Member Downey?
I have no questions, comments.
All right, Member Grove?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Member Ken?
No questions.
Thank you, I don't have any questions either. I know we have a correspondence list also for this one. Do we need to do anything formal to enter that into the record, or just mention the question?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. I just want to check and see who we have with us this evening. Doesn't look like any of the attendees have their hands raised. I did receive an email from Ling Albrecht, who is at 73 Canal Street. And she said she's interested in getting on the Zoom, but the link from the last meeting doesn't work. So I responded to her email saying that she needs to access the link off of the current agenda. So she might be joining in on this, on this matter, but I've directed her to where to obtain that off of the current agenda. All our agendas and meeting notices contain the Zoom information.
Okay. And this time, I'll see if there's any members of the public that have comments. If there's anybody else on the Zoom via telephone or, or video otherwise with respect to 42 Hayward Street, please raise your hand or hit *9. So, Director Santucci Rossi, how long ago did you get that email?
Sorry, I was yelling back to Ken to see if he got any emails. I got that at 6:17. I don't even know what time it is.
Okay. 15 minutes since then. Do you think we should keep it open for a little bit longer, or?
Um, that's up, that's up to you, Madam Chair. If you want to, if you want to table it and go to another hearing, you know, again, we, all of the, we post everything in accordance with all our requirements and everything is accessible. You need to use the current agenda, obviously, to access the, the current meeting. So I would default to you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'm glad I actually looked at that.
I guess.
To like, I'm like email, call, and I'm like, oh my God, I'm at a meeting, I need to pay attention.
I guess I'll put it to this, yes, I agree, it was properly noticed, and, and there weren't any comments in the email, so I would be comfortable closing it, but I'll ask the applicant if there's any preference to close it now or to table it until after the next public hearing, and then come back to it.
I would like to close it.
All right.
Melissa, is there a phone number you can call in for this call? Is it only through the link on?
No, you can call, you can, and you can, to get on the Zoom, you can call in. Like if I look in the participants now, I can see phone numbers, which mean people are just listening, they don't have the video. Like if I look in the participants now, I can see uh, phone numbers, which mean people are just listening. They don't have the video. Hi, listeners. Um, and then you can come on, you know, and see sort of uh, all our lovely faces and smiles and, and whatnot. Um, I, I don't see, um, again, they, they might, this, one of these, maybe them. Um, I'm not sure, but I don't see any hands up.
All right. Well, hearing no public comments that have come in and noting that that email was well over fifteen minutes ago now, and there hasn't been any introduction. I'll see if there's a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move that.
Thank you, member Downey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I'll ask, are there any additional comments from the planning board members on the draft conditions that were issued? Uh, Clerk McCamey?
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, member Downey?
No, I have none.
Member Grove?
Nothing on the conditions, Madam Chairman, but my preference would be to hold, put this on hold through the next hearing.
Okay. Um, yeah, we didn't just vote on closing the hearing, did we? I skipped that again, didn't I?
So, yeah, we can just kind of, if we can just pause for one second and, and again, um, so we have to um, accept the correspondence list. Um, and then um, we did have a motion that was made and seconded to close the hearing, so um, we can, we can put that to a vote. Um, and then we can deliberate on, uh, take a motion on the actual application. The correspondence list is dated, uh, excuse me, is for, um, was issued today. Um, and contains uh, twenty items, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. So since we have the motion on the table, I'll ask about the vote and the motion to close the public hearing. Clerk McCamey?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
No.
Member Ken?
Yes.
And I, voice, Vice Chair Crowe votes yes also. Thank you. All right. And do we have a motion to accept the correspondence list dated today, September fourteenth, having twenty items on it?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And to vote on that motion, Clerk McCamey?
Yes.
All right. Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Do we have a motion to act on the draft decision with conditions?
I'll move that motion.
Okay. And, and member Downey, is your motion to approve the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said approve, yes, to the uh, grading permit for file twenty-one twelve. Subject to the conditions discussed at this meeting be approved.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Take a vote on that motion to approve the decision with conditions and I'll just note in with the modifications discussed at the hearing, including the condition six to change that date to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, votes in favor, voting on that, Clerk McCamey?
Yes.
And member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
No.
Member Ken?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Crowe is a yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will make the revisions uh, as discussed this evening by the board and the applicant and incorporate those into the grading permit. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And thank you all very much for your submissions. All right. And I'll call the next agenda item, which is file number twenty-one ten. This is three hundred Quincy Avenue. It's a application for a special permit and a site plan review. So we will do, I think actually for this one, I'll start to see if there's an update from Director Santucci Rossi on the application and then ask the applicant and its team to present where we're at after that. So Director Santucci Rossi, do you wanna go first or do you wanna hear?
Thank you very much, um, Madam Chair. So, um, I see we have Paul Maribito's with us tonight. Uh, and also the applicant, Stephen May. So since the last meeting, um, there was quite a few comments in the staff report. Uh, Mr. Maribito did a great job, um, fixing up the site plan. Um, that was uh, circulated uh, in the board packets um, last week. And essentially, the applicant has made some revisions to the parking on site and also has, um, I'm just opening up my plan, so I know I'm talking about made some revisions to the parking on site. He's noted where the trash totes are gonna go, and I know some of these things sound a little silly, but it is a small lot. The lot's under four thousand square feet. Landscaping looks good. We know where the lighting's gonna be. Um, he's using um, the rear yard, a portion of the rear yard for parking. Um, and then he's got two spots along the driveway that runs the full length of the property from Quincy Avenue. Um, just about to the back of the site. Um, so the site plan looks really good. Um, the problem is, we do not have a floor plan. And Mr. Mai, um, you know, Connor and I started discussing this with him back in November of last year. Um, and Mr. Mai all along has represented and, and his engineer has also represented in the revised materials that they would be rehabilitating uh, the interior of the existing structure. Uh, and when Connor and I have been engaged, um, with Mr. Mai over the past, you know, we're going on quite a few months now. Um, we have been, that's what was applied for, and that's what we've been discussing with him, primarily because the um, the side setback on the non-driveway side, which would be the south side of the structure is, is over the property line and spots it slightly encroaches. But for, basically, we'll say it's, it pretty much on the property line. Um, there is about twenty feet of that structure uh, with zero setbacks. So um, you know, this department is not big advocates of uh, extending structures that have no setbacks. So we have been, you know, okay, fix it up inside. Where's your floor plan? Where's your floor plan? Where's your floor plan? Uh, and the floor plan that I reviewed after my vacation, um, that was submitted. Um, it was, Mr. Mai had um, submitted that on August twenty-fourth. Shows a, a big addition on the second and third floor. So, I mean, for lack of a better words, it's just an absolute non-starter. It's not something that we can support. Uh, he can go to the zoning board of appeals if he wants to. Uh, again, this department is also responsible for that review. Uh, we don't vote on the petitions, but again, um, you know, let's, let's keep what we have here. The structure's a decent size. It's a, it's an under four thousand square foot lot. So then Mr. Mai showed me some plans yesterday, which included um, like a doghouse style addition on the second floor to accommodate the egress. Uh, and then we had a phone call today. Uh, you know, around twelve-thirty with his architect and he was gonna, I don't know, figure out something. So um, you know, at this point, let's either get a plan that's gonna show this um, the way it is, um, or it's, it's really time to just withdraw the application. Because, again, I don't know how this board feels, but, and again, I'm not speaking for the zoning board, but you know, putting an addition there is really something that we would have a very, very, very difficult time uh, getting on board with. So, uh, I do have a staff report that basically, you know, again, Paul is here. Site plan looks great. Floor plan, we don't have one. So, uh, I'll leave it at that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I will turn it over to the applicant at this point to respond to some of the updates before I go into the planning board member comments.
This is Paul Maribito, just, just, um, two, two things for clarification. The lot is forty feet by a hundred feet. That's a four thousand square foot lot. The plan shows that as well. It is not under four thousand square feet. The other thing I'll point out is on the southerly side, the existing building in our site plan shows it on the um, sketch to the right-hand side above the title block. It shows that the existing building is over the property line by zero point four feet. That's a pre-existing, uh, non-conforming situation. The proposed stairs in that area that would be the um, uh, egress out of the first floor will be uh, totally on the lot. That, those stairs are not encroaching on anybody's property. They'll be on the property line, but not encroaching. Um, other than that, I'm in agreement with uh, the review comments from Melissa. So then I'll turn it over to Stephen if he wants to make any comments about the floor plans, which I'm not that familiar with. I'm, I'm not the architect.
Yes, hi. Um, the floor plan is, is gonna be updated. I'm so sorry. Um, that's just my first time doing this. I, I don't have any experience. I thought that was the, how it sounds on the plan, but I, I apologize, but that should, uh, should have been, um, uh, no additions at, at, at all in the back. So everything's within the structure. Um, so the architect is going to revise the plan, um, and, and so, um, no, no additions.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that update. I'll turn it over to the members of the board for any questions or comments at this juncture. Um, Clerk McCamey?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so after listening to um, the director's presentation and after just hearing Mr. Mai speak, I would encourage Mr. Mai to work closely with the staff. Um, whenever we have projects, uh, you, you know, we, we want to make sure that uh, they conform to all the rules and regulations. This is a particularly challenging project. And I, I would simply suggest, um, from our experience with other projects, that again, you work closely with the director and the staff um, in, in order to meet everything. Um, you know, again, not knowing what, what many of the issues are and to the extent that we can remedy anything, that's of course desirable. Um, you, you, um, we, we wanna make sure that we have good projects. And I'm sure as you, as, in case you don't know, um, all the material that you submit, I mean, basically that's your legal document and that's what we're operating off of. So I, I, I don't wanna go on a lecture about this, but just since, since you mentioned that you're new to this, um, I would just uh, suggest to you strongly uh, that you work with the director and the staff to complete every single item. And make sure that every single item um, meets the requirements and meets the requi- uh, requirements that um, the town of Braintree, um, you know, you know, wants to see in these types of projects. We want, we want high-quality projects. I know you're trying to, you're, you're making an investment here. And you're um, trying to fix up a property which is in disrepair, but we really need you to put everything into this so that we can evaluate it correctly. It, it helps you just as much as it helps us. There, there can't be anything missing. Okay, so again, since you mentioned that you're new to this, uh, we've heard this from many other people. Work with the staff and, and do it correctly. Mr. Maribito's been here many times. Um, you know, you have, you have your experts, but we have our requirements. So you're gonna have to meet them.
I got it. I totally understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And member Downey?
Um, just to kinda echo what member McCamey said, um, we're part-time. We're here once a month for four or five hours. We see kind of a snapshot, um, and when you're prepared, um, through Melissa and the staff, then it makes everyone's job here a lot easier and a lot easier for you as well. So work with the full-time staff um, as cordially and as, you know, quickly as you can, uh, before you, before you get to us. That's, that's my only uh, words of wisdom.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And member Grove?
What comment, Madam Chair?
Thank you. And member Ken?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and I'll reiterate the same. I, I, when I read through the the Ross engineering submission that was submitted and it talked about in one of the comments that there is no proposed structure or building being applied for. And then what really required a pretty close review of the plans to even notice the addition that was proposed on the end. I was, I was quite surprised to see that. So I'm glad to hear in the context of this meeting that that's being taken out because I, I agree that it wouldn't be something that would be appropriate i- in any context in this type of application and the way that it's been presented. Um, it is important to make sure that there's a clear understanding of what's being proposed and that the information being submitted to the staff and the planning board is, is as complete and as adequate as possible. As member Downey had said, we're trying to review a lot of material in advance of the meetings and the more concise and clear it can be, the more helpful it is. Uh, it sounds like at this point, there are some updates to the plans that are going to be required if the application continues. So I'll ask the applicant if there is a, a date that or Director Santucci Rossi, you look like you are ready to say something.
Well, I was, I was just asking Connor the date and I have it right on the wall in front of me. Um, so uh, the next meeting is October twelfth. Um, and the deadline to submit those revised plans is September twenty-seventh. So uh, Mr. Mai feels as though that's enough time for him. We can continue it for October twelfth. Um, that night we'll have, we do have one new application, um, that Ken's gonna be working on. So you'll get those notices and stuff in the next week or so. Um, and then forty-four Allen will be continued this evening as well and be on that agenda. So there is room. Um, if Mr. Mai can get us the drawings in time, um, you know, and maybe even before that, if there's, you know, gonna be more of this. Um, you know, back and forth.
Yes, I, I am um, confident that we will be able to deliver that, um, within the next week.
Okay. Yeah, and so just to confirm on the record, so the applicant is requesting a continuance to October twelfth?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to continue this public hearing to October twelfth?
I'll move that.
Thank you, member Downey. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, and to vote, Clerk McCamey?
Yes.
Do you remember Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. We'll see you on October twelfth.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, can I just add something really quick?
Yes.
I just wanna say, uh, imagine my excitement when I saw Paul Maribito's name on here, but Paul and I did a lot of work in Norwell and I just wanted to, it's good to see a familiar face here and there every now and again, so that's all.
You're good. Are you on the board in Braintree now?
No, I work here now.
Oh, you do. I, I, I didn't know you left Norwell. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Paul.
You too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Okay, with that, I will open the continued hearing for file number twenty-one hyphen fifteen. This is the four and forty-four Allen Street project. A special permit and site plan review application. I see quite a few of the applicants on the video this evening. I, it might be helpful to start, oh, well, I was going to say the planning director, but I don't see her at the moment. So I will turn it over to the applicant to get us started. And then again, we'll do the, the planning department and the members of the board, and I will ask for public comment at the, at the end of that discussion. So, the applicant would like to introduce themselves.
Good evening, Chairperson Crowe, Frank Marinelli, uh, representing uh, Wynn Properties and Arch Communities, who are referred to as Wynn. Uh, and uh, just briefly recap, uh, for the board, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, Wynn was designated earlier this year in the town's RFP process as a redeverber of the former belt site on Allen Street. And under the uh, Wynn proposal, as we showed the last time and on the plans that have been filed, the site will be transformed from a vacant and blighted former industrial site into fifty-six beautifully designed and landscaped residences known as switch house lofts. That is the proposal. It complies with the criteria for issuance of the requested special permits for much-needed housing, uh, which is one of the purposes of the unique- which is one of the purposes of the Unique Landing Zoning District, Section 615. And it transforms this site by Wynn, one of the nation's premier housing developers. The site is different from any of the properties to the north, it's in a different zoning district. And Wynn is investing 1.5 million in site acquisition plus over 25 million in construction. The redeveloped site, as we showed the last time, will have a public riverwalk amenity that will extend from Allen Street over 600 linear feet down to the riverfront and to a river overlook deck. And with this transformation from vacant industrial to 56 residences, open space at the site will more than double from approximately 21% currently to approximately 44%. The Landing Zoning District allows 80 to 100% lot coverage under Section 615, so we have significantly less lot coverage. We have designed with only 56% lot coverage, 44% open space and a significant public amenity. There'll be hundreds of new plantings economically for the first time. After decades of municipal ownership, the vacant site will now produce significant real estate tax revenue, construction jobs and other substantial economic benefits, I think that in announcing the RFP designation of Wynn, Mayor Kikoris referenced 25 years of a vacant site and the opportunity to create an estimated 152 jobs and $12 million in economic activity, we think those numbers, you know, at least on the economic activity have certainly increased. I'm again pleased to introduce to the board our redevelopment team here tonight. From Wynn Development, we have Adam Stein, Senior Vice President of Development, and Tim Mustacato, who's the Director of Acquisitions. Wynn has been based in Boston for over 50 years, this is their 50th year, they've acquired and developed over 2.5 billion in holdings in 10 states and including the completion of over three dozen historically significant adaptive reuse projects such as the Switch House and what we're gonna do and preserve and expand the Switch House residences. They are the largest management company, residential management company in Massachusetts with over 17,500 units under management. And also here is Rich Relic, he's the Principal of the Co-Developer Arch Communities, Rich has over 25 years' experience in real estate development. Our project engineer Jesse Johnson of Weston Sampson is on the meeting and he'll discuss stormwater management. We met last week with the town engineering team and peer reviewer Deb Keller from Merrill Engineering. So I think tonight is an opportunity for Jesse, Deb Keller, Melissa to report to the board on those engineering matters. We also have on the meeting David Gamble and James Corico of Gamble Associates, the project architects. Jennifer Ng of Clopfer Martin Design, the landscape architect is also here and Jennifer can discuss any questions regarding the public riverwalk amenity. Mr. Grove had asked about separation of the riverwalk from private residences at the last meeting and we will have appropriate separation which Jen can discuss and we'll have small wayfaring signage to guide the public on the riverwalk amenity. Which is a logical extension of the trails that were created from Smith Beach to Watson Park on the other side of Quincy Avenue with the Frank Tolan and Lee Dingee pathways. So the site, as we presented last time and shown on the plans, is about 1.9 acres. It once had the Beld operations which commenced in 1892, they expanded substantially with industrial buildings two huge smoke stacks that were on the property. In 2011, the Beld site was appropriately located in the Waymouth Landing Zoning District and that's important to point out because it has extremely different purposes than some of the other zoning districts in the area. And tonight, again, we seek the special permit approval under Section 601, 615 and 608. The proposal of 56 residences with the public riverwalk does meet the purposes of the Landing Zoning District. We covered some of those the last time and I know that Melissa Santucci and her staff report covers them very well. First, to provide a range of housing options for people of different income levels and stages of life to propose compact horizontal and vertical residential development. Thirdly, to upgrade existing properties. Fourth, to promote an active and publicly accessible waterfront. And fifth, to encourage residential uses to support a vibrant transit-oriented landing district with commuter rail and small businesses and we see that really taking hold with the development that has occurred in this landing zoning, this unique landing zoning district with unique purposes. Just briefly, the project itself, we've showed on the last time, the Easterly Building, the Switch House Building closest to Quincy Avenue but about 100 feet from Quincy Avenue. A second floor will be added for a total of 16 residences, eight on each floor of the Switch House. On the water side, as the board knows, the grade drops significantly and at that lower level, there'll be residence storage, meeting rooms, gym and other amenities. Other old buildings that are on the site, I walked the site and there is, there's old equipment, there's old buildings, there's old you know, debris, that'll all be removed, it's a substantial and challenging construction project, the pipe shop, the administrative building will be demolished. And in addition to the 16 residences, Madam Chair, that I described in the Switch House, a new building west of the Switch House shown on our plans will be constructed parallel to Allen Street that has 40 residences and it's got an Easterly and Westerly section with a glass enclosed bridge. It's four stories, there's 17 residences in the Easterly portion, 23 in the Westerly portion. Tim and Adam can discuss any of our housing which is presented in Melissa Santucci's staff report, I think on page 4. But you see that, you know, Wynn as a leader in much-needed housing not only provides the the percentage of affordable that is requested that will count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory as local-approved units, but they also provide what's known as, you know, some of the lost middle, 80 to 120% income average, on the average income. So, you know, that's 35 of the 56 units in those categories. Just to wrap up here, you know, the South Shore Chamber has issued us a housing study that shows a need for 40,000 more housing units on the South Shore for the region to remain competitive, they've written a letter of support and there are various other reports attesting to the need for housing, which is a paramount purpose of the Landing District. The as I said, you know, Jesse Johnson, in addition to the special permit on 601, 615, under the Landing District, we also have a floodplain special permit, that was some of the discussion last week with the town officials and discussing stormwater improvements with the peer reviewer. The rate and volume of stormwater runoff from the site will be reduced post-construction versus pre-construction, the existing drainage and sewer disposal infrastructure at the site is old and Switch House Lofts will install new drainage infrastructure, new sewer service that complies with current design standards. I wanted to just close by mentioning that along with the publicly accessible riverwalk, there are seawall improvements and repairs that'll be made and these are aspects of the project that, you know, Jesse and Jesse will talk about, you know, constructability, construction challenges that will require investigating and seeking state and federal funding opportunities and grants, we're trying to do some of that with the town. Now we'll be having further meetings to explore those opportunities. Melissa Santucci provided a referral to South Shore Housing Consortium, which we appreciate. Funding like mass work opportunities are assisted as the board knows by the project being approved locally and being shovel-ready. So there are important timetables for applications, including with DHCD, which we can discuss further, but right now I'll I'll ask Jesse if it's appropriate, Madam Chair, to discuss the engineering and then maybe hear from Melissa and the peer reviewer.
Yeah, thank you Attorney Marinelli for that comprehensive update, I think before we turn it over to Jesse, I'll just ask our peer reviewer Deb Keller, who's on the line from Merrill Engineers, if she'd like to give us an update now or wait until later on?
Sure, again, Deb Keller from Merrill Engineers, we did meet last week to go over my review letter with respect to drainage and I think we touched upon almost everything. Just briefly, I think some of the major comments were just making sure that the closed drainage system pipes were sized appropriately and to make sure that we have the capacity within the pipe system for the project. We did review the hydraulics analysis overall for the site, looking for flow. Knowing it's still going into the coastal river, we don't need to be too specific about that, but we wanted to make sure that we were getting the treatment before we discharged. And I think there's that's pretty much the main concern that I had, there were cleanup issues on the plans, but Jesse and I spoke with them, I think Jesse felt comfortable that he could address those.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Keller, all right, sorry to interrupt your process there Attorney Marinelli.
Oh, that's okay.
Something now, thank you.
Not at all, that's fine. So Madam Chair, if you'd like, we could turn to Jesse Johnson or Melissa Santucci, however you want to proceed.
Madam Chair, why don't we hear from all of their team and their updates and then I can kind of, you know, be the closer maybe?
Sounds great, all right.
In a minute, I'll have Jen call up a plan that we're working on that shows some of the working revisions, but again, everybody, Jesse Johnson, Weston and Sampson, civil engineering consultant for the project. I wanted to update everybody, let you know that we've been doing a lot of work on this project in the background since the last time we met. We've since met with the Conservation Commission, got feedbacks from the commission themselves. We also got direct feedback, written comments from the Conservation Agent. We also had the staff meeting that was mentioned last week where we sat down with the DPW, peer reviewer consultant, also with Melissa, Conservation Agent and the chairwoman from the planning board and got some really good feedback and kind of had a working session to see what other changes we could possibly do, other improvements, and I would say overall, I don't take exception or we don't take exception of the comments that came at us, we didn't really feel it was anything that was unreasonable for requests. I think the one thing that everybody really asked for is if that we could do anything else for improvements on stormwater and specifically low-impact design. There's certainly a lot of different tools out there that we can investigate, that was overwhelming the comments that came back from the commission and everybody really is, is there anything else that we can do, so that combined with doing a lot of investigative work on some of the repairs that are gonna be needed on that seawall that Frank had mentioned. We also, it's worth mentioning, went out on site with the contractor that's targeted to do the projects, also a specialist that deals with doing this type of work along, basically an installer that looks at doing this type of work along the waterfront, has a lot of experience to get their guidance. And we looked at the condition of the existing seawall and what some of the repairs that might be needed, just to frankly, for lack of a better word, shore up this whole area and make sure it's gonna last in perpetuity. And what we were finding is that it's cost prohibitive and also constructability-wise, it's not gonna be able to be done to the level that we initially thought. We also assessed the environmental impacts to do the repairs to the level we thought and it was gonna be too intrusive on the actual resource area. Because the seawall is older, not constructed to today's standards, there are there are some portions specifically in that southwest corner associated with, as you see here on the call-out, the demo, Screenhouse West. In that general area, the support for that section of the Screenhouse is a pre-cast concrete, but it's in very bad shape, it's in disrepair, would have to be, we'd have to set up cofferdams, dewatering, the local area and do substantial repairs, so just have it to be able to be supported to have people congregating and have some type of walled structure like we were originally contemplating there. So what we decided to do was scale that back and just use the smaller portion of the original foundation, which we're now calling the Screenhouse East. Which is smaller block, still a good termination area for the riverwalk, but an area if we just isolate to doing improvements to support that area, it really takes a lot of the intrusion out of the resource area and increases the likelihood of constructability. We also removed the bridge in that middle portion, if you will, of the alcove. Again, looking at structural engineering analysis, if it could support a bridge going over there, some of the wall repairs, some of the intrusion into the resource and it just, it's not gonna be viable, so we're now looking to have the riverwalk go around that area. If you can see by the pattern shown on here, you can see the continuation of the riverwalk going around. That's gonna really be the significant changes from what you saw last time, is just where the termination point is gonna be and how we're going around that middle portion of the site. What you can see on here to address some of the concerns about low-impact development, if we could do anything, we did hear that and what we're trying to do now is put this, what's called off as an eight-foot-wide stormwater treatment garden. We'll have the stormwater chic from the paved parking area and go into some channels, if you will, that will cut through the sidewalk and go into what essentially will function like a rain garden in this eight-foot-wide strip. So at least allow the water to come through there, pond, if you will, have some chance of infiltrating if it can and then have an overflow that will go into the conventional stormwater system and get treated before it gets discharged into the river. This, we feel, is a good compromise and a good hybrid of a low-impact design technique that will allow us to still get the water moving off the site into some green space, collect it if it can't keep up with it and then get it back and treated before it gets discharged. So we did want to give you a sneak peek at that before we advance the design, because there'll be some regrading and some redesign and a little bit of analysis to get that finalized by next Friday, which we essentially have to get everything done by then in order to meet your next submission, your next submission deadline. But I can let Jen go into some of the details about the improvements along the riverwalk, I just did want to mention the stormwater improvements in this area.
So Jesse covered some of the big, like all the big moves that drove the site plan changes. One of the things that is an added benefit with a more modest Screenhouse renovation is that this allows us to actually remove what we think is like sort of a secondary or false floor in the Screenhouse East build, which allows us to have a little bit more control over how the riverwalk meets that foundation, so that allows us to remove the stairs and the sloped walk, which is a real benefit. The other thing is because we have a little bit more of a modest Greenhouse renovation, we think that we can decrease the riverwalk path from 15 feet to 10 feet, that allows us to have a little bit more planting per some of the Concom sort of initial feedback that we received from them. The other benefit that we had when we started thinking about the path moving around the outfall as opposed to over it, is it really, like, we started to evaluate the paths and what are the path connections doing and we were able to consolidate them. That gives us more space for that passive recreation lawn, so things like picnicking, frisbee, watching the water, being out in the open. The other added benefit with the stormwater treatment garden in the location that it is in is it gives you a little bit more buffer from the parking lot, so when we're thinking about this passive recreation lawn, you probably don't want to be against cars. So there's another benefit there. And then trying to think about Commissioner Grove, your comments about the public-private separation, how can the stormwater garden or rain garden help us with that and how can we start to use trees to reinforce that sort of more intuitive divide? And then, of course, what Frank mentioned, adding signage. So I think that is everything in terms of the site plan changes, everything kind of north of the parking lot, the residential amenities all remains the same from what you saw in August. Everything kind of north of the parking lot, the residential amenities, all remains the same from what you saw in August.
Yeah, and I would just kind of finish off by saying that the comments that we sleep, we received also from Melissa. We did get the staff comments between those formal comments, the comments that we got from your peer reviewer. We felt the rest of it was general housekeeping or adding additional detail that we didn't take, again, exception to. And we feel as though we can address everything before the next hearing, have a good plan set for you to review.
Thank you. And Attorney Marinelli, is there anybody else from your team that wants to weigh in?
I think we're, we're good right now, happy to answer any questions as we proceed.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Santucci Rossi?
I may, thank you, Madam Chair. So to the, to the board members and to the applicant, I prepared a pretty detailed, lengthy staff report. Many of the board members have not had the opportunity to work on projects down in the landing. And as you can see from the staff report, the landing zoning and language in there is, is very design-related and has sort of some different components that we're not used to seeing in our other sections of the ordinance. So I felt for myself, oh, to make sure I don't miss anything, and also for the board, kind of just running through. And again, as Jesse noted, most of the information is just commentary and sort of just pointing out, yes, this complies. Yes, they're providing this. We did have an excellent meeting last week with the various disciplines that sort of have skin in this game here and making sure that we spend some time coordinating competing interests of sewer and drainage and making sure that each of those disciplines is appropriately dealt with here on the site. I really, I don't have, I mean, it's an excellent project. The, the chart that I have included in the staff report on page four, I believe, I copied that from, from Frank and I think their presentation at the last meeting. But I felt it was important to include that because we typically find ourselves in this, in this category of market rate quote luxury units, and then we have the units at the 80% of AMI. And anybody that works in the housing field or deals with housing or runs any housing programs, that, that window of people at or below 80% is a very, very niche sort of individual and an interesting demographic to fill. My experience here in Braintree and running, you know, various housing programs and, and sort of essentially creating a quote housing, you know, division within this office, I'm constantly finding the need to help and provide options for people at lower incomes, 30% and 60%. And then sort of as Frank had noted, and I was sort of waving my hands, you know, where's the housing for the staff in this department? Where's the housing for our teachers? Where's the housing for our fire and, and life safety and, and police as well? Those individuals starting out are, they're making over 80, but they're not able to afford, you know, a $3,000 one-bedroom. I mean, not many people can. So I want to commend the applicant for providing this variety of affordability at one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms. And really essentially almost partnering with the town here because the town will receive great, great benefits from this unit mix and from this level of affordability. And I think those are things that we often struggle with and we, you know, ask people to do various things. And sometimes we're successful when it comes to housing and sometimes we're not. So this is something that is, is wonderful and that these, that these, this developer here is promoting. So the staff report pretty much speaks for itself, all 13 pages. I'm sure everyone went through every single, every line and every page. But there's not much negative in here. Again, I think Jesse pointed it out, just kind of dotting our i's and crossing our t's and sort of bringing everyone together. They, the comments that I heard this evening from the applicant means that they're listening to the town and DPW and Conservation Commission and the Conservation Staff, which makes me very happy. And I think we are in a position to, I've asked Jesse, you know, we don't need 15 different revisions. So let's get all the comments, let's hear from everybody and let's get a final set of plans that we can start to work conditions on and work towards, towards a decision. So I don't know if there's any particular comments from the board members or any clarifications that are needed in the staff report. I can take any of those questions at any time, Madam Chair. And we do get to the public comment portion of the meeting. I know that Ken has received an email from resident Ms. Abbott, who had commented previously and that was shared with the board. And I also received an email questions from Mr. Tom Bowes, who lives on Shepherd Ave. So whenever you're ready, Madam Chair, we can take these maybe after the members of the public that are here that would like to speak. But I don't have anything addition to add. It's really exciting for an opportunity to work on this site. It's tired, it's past its time. And I think this is the perfect combination of uses, riverfront access, as well as sort of preserving some of the, the buildings and features of the existing site. And I'll be working with the applicant team to go through any additional comments in the staff report and make sure that all the additional materials are submitted in advance of the, of the continued hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director. All right, I will ask the members of the board for any comments that they have, starting with Clerk McComme.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question pertains to the parking. I know that it meets the requirements, but with 56 units and 60 parking spaces, you know, and with two and three-bedroom apartments, can, can we get some more explanation about how the parking is going to be work, how it's going to work? Is there going to be some sort of allocation, you know, what happens? Where, where are guests going to park? You know, if you had a birthday party or something, you know, 60 spots, I get it because of the landing. But, you know, 56 units, so it's, it's pretty tight. So Mr. Marinelli or anybody on their team, how's it going to work?
So we've had a number of developments, as you know, Mayor McComme. And, you know, whether it be the Fraser development of 33 units up in South Braintree or be the landing itself, when you're within a transit zone and you're within that close proximity to walking to commuter rail, virtually every traffic expert I've, I've worked with that does parking studies as well will show you that the studies are, you know, here we have point, we have a zoning bylaw, a zoning ordinance that requires .8, .8 parking spaces per unit. So we, we far exceed that. I mean, we, that would equate to 45 parking spaces, we have 60. So we have 33% more than are required with the 60. And, and that is a, you know, that's an indication of what the landing district is intended to, to accomplish with bike racks, with, you know, just commuter rail location. That standard was utilized at Landing 53, and I can point to that as a, you know, specific example. That's 172 units with 198 parking spaces, so, so just over one. So, I mean, we are, we're, we're well over one. You know, we're, we're, we're six additional spaces on 56 units. There are other parking opportunities in the landing area. We have, you know, MBTA lots that have hundreds of spaces. So, you know, the intent of the district, and, you know, you can refer to MAPC and the studies that, you know, the intent is not to have parking so much that it restricts the, the primary purpose of paramount purpose of providing housing. So all I can say is that we wouldn't be building this if we didn't think it would work, investing $25 million. We're, we're consistent and exceed the, the parking requirement for this district. And again, it is a commuter rail district and we think that the parking is adequate. And, you know, in addition to the MBTA lots, there are, you know, on-street opportunities as well. We're hoping some of those on-street opportunities get augmented by the town's Allen Street improvements, which, which obviously need to proceed. And we'll also, you know, put Allen Street in a one-way direction just heading westerly. So that's, I hope that's responsive.
Yeah, well, so yes and no. Again, I'm not, I'm not arguing with the fact that we have .8. You know, we also did the Landing Apartment Building that has some other parking opportunities closer to it. I'm just kind of raising the question, you know, you've got 56 units, you've got 60 parking spaces. You know, what happens if that means that four units, if they have two cars, you're maxed out? So I'm just simply saying, where, where is, where is everybody going to park? And where are the guests going to park? And that, that ties into my follow-up question, which you just brought up, which is Allen Street. I know we haven't decided on if it's going to be one-way or whatever. We all know the challenges of Allen Street. And just to put it in context, I believe that Wynn also owns the Watson Complex, if I'm not mistaken, over by Four River. And, you know, I see a lot of cars parked out in front every time I drive by. So I'm not sure what we're going to do about Allen Street, if, if we do convert it, if we're going to have, you know, on-street parking. I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, those types of items have been decided. I'm just simply, you know, from a common sense standpoint, where are guests and other people going to park?
Well, there are opportunities in the area, and I think, you know, over, whether it be in the Watson Park area right across the street, if, if there was any kind of overflow or somebody, you know, needing to have on-street parking. But, you know, there, there are, there is a sufficient inventory of parking in the area. And we comply with the zoning and we feel that it's going to work. And it, that we feel that's going to work under all of the commuter rail location studies.
Yeah, but, but you, you don't know, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, be real negative about this, but you don't know who's going to live there. You don't know if they're going to take commuter rail, you don't know what they're going to do. But I, I do know, I would think that virtually everybody, every person in a unit there, particularly since you're going to have, you know, multi-room units, is going to have a car. So I'm, I just, I'm just simply saying, where are all these people plus the guests going to park?
I'm not sure, yeah. I, I think there's a lot of speculation involved in, you know, this hypothetical. I'm not sure at all that everybody is going to have a car, you know? I mean, there are, there are folks that, as, as Melissa Santucci pointed out, that are, that are, you know, workforce affordable units. I'm, I'm not sure that everybody is going to have a car.
Okay, so Mr. Marinelli?
That they really are relying on the commuter rail location. And, you know, we're complying with the ordinance.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not disputing compliance with the ordinance. I'm, I'm simply, I just think it's a common sense thing. I'm just, you know, I'm looking at the numbers. So I, I don't know, does, does Wynn have a process to handle parking? Again, I'm just using Watson as an example. When I go by there, I see 30 cars parked outside. I don't know if that was, you know, planned or if it's over, you know, I, I don't know what the thinking was on Watson since we weren't involved with that. But I, I see a lot of cars in the street. And, you know, when you tie in what potentially could happen to Allen Street, which is a narrow street anyway. So is, is?
Well, that enhances, that enhances.
Does Wynn have a process, are they going to incentivize people not to have car? I mean, do they do this in other areas? I'm just?
Yeah. I could speak, I could just speak to Watson if you'd like. This is, my name is Adam Stein with Wynn. And we developed Watson a couple of years ago. The, the property has adequate parking. What you're seeing is people park along Howard and the side street that ties into Howard Street because it's convenient. And they don't have to drive into the property and go through the parking garage and go to the back of the building. So they park on Howard Street, they cross the street, they go through the front door, and it's more convenient for them. It's not because we have a parking problem at the Watson, it's just where people choose to park. So if you were actually to drive into the building or into the garage or the parking, it'd be a lot of parking spaces. That's just an example, that's the Watson. It's a larger building with a larger footprint and we actually have more parking. What we, what we don't have at the Watson, what, what we have at Bell is convenient access to a commuter rail station. And I think what Frank is trying to describe and what Richard is describing is that we're going to have to, we're going to have to generate people that want to live at this property without a bunch of cars. Because by design, that's what we have. We have a very small percentage of three-bedroom units. We have mostly one-bedroom units and some twos. But I think what's going to happen is if you have two or three cars and there aren't off-site parking options, you're not going to live at this property. So we have to, by design, find people that want to live next to a commuter rail station that have one or less cars, and we'll have to, and we'll have to manage that. So I don't have a great answer other than that, other than we have to, and we are choosing to develop a property at this location, close to a commuter rail station, one-to-one parking, with, with a handful of visitor spaces.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that, and I guess, you know, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
And, you know, I guess, I'm sure you thought about it, you know, this, you have to deal with this day-to-day. But, you know, I, I guess we, we just, you know, I don't want the same thing to happen here. Everybody thinks it's more convenient to park on Allen Street than it is to, you know, go down to their spot. But I'm sure that you know, again, when, when you look at this, and I'm sure I'm not the only person who's looking at this and saying, where are all the cars going to go? So all, all I'm, all I'm saying is, you know, I'm, I'm happy to hear you thinking about it. I don't know, you know, what you're eventually going to come up with. I don't know what we're eventually going to come up with it with on Allen Street, but I know we can't have, you know, 30 cars parked in Allen Street. But, you know, I, I don't know. So I just think that, that we can't just simply say that we're meeting the requirement. I think we, that, that we have to actively think about, like you said, attracting people. Maybe there's an incentive, if you don't have a car, you know, you get, you get a better rent or something. You know, that's up to you, but I'm, I'm just saying that I don't know where all these cars are going to go. I don't, I don't see them parking across the street at Watson Park. I don't see them parking anywhere close. Like I said, if you're going to a birthday party, you're, you're not going to park, you know, a quarter mile away. So I just want to raise that issue and it ties in with Allen Street. So again, I'm happy to hear that you're actively thinking about it. I, I really think we need to make sure we keep thinking about it, so.
Yeah, I think that it's a partnership with the town too. And I think that the town has to keep thinking about it. I appreciate the comments on Allen Street because, you know, that, that is a big improvement that the, the, the development is looking forward to. It's, it's, it's a town improvement project. It is, you know, extending down to Shaw Street, is proposing one-way traffic, which is a tremendous benefit because that, that allows the right-of-way width, instead of being used for two, two-way traffic, to have some sheltered on-street parking, which doesn't only, you know, benefit the types of concerns that you're expressing, but, but also other, other inventory in the neighborhood on, on Allen Street. So we look forward to the town moving ahead on the Allen Street improvement. And, you know, as I said earlier in my remarks, there are, there are, there are funding sources that, and funding opportunities that need to be looked at, whether it's Mass Works or other federal and state programs that the town can apply for.
Sure, no, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Marinelli. But I, I really think that, you know, the town has responsibility, but the applicant certainly, it lies on their shoulders. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that they're thinking about it, but I just, I don't want to keep on beating this thing. I think I, I think I've made my point. And I, I, I think that it's going to be an important aspect for success for this project. And, you know, I guess I'll just leave it at that. So if So if we can figure out, if we can be creative collectively, I think we're going to have to be. So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. So thank you.
As a general comment on the landing, you know, the town may want to investigate relationships with the MBTA because there is a tremendous amount of asphalt that's unused a good amount of time, which is, you know, dedicated parking areas that, you know, the town may want to investigate ways to partner with the MBTA to let the population in that area utilize those at either a reduced rate or, you know, some kind of nightly opportunity.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Mr. Marinelli. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, Member Downey?
I have no questions or comments.
Okay. Thank you, Member Grove? Member Grove, did you have any comments on this one? Here, I'm mute right now.
There I am. Okay, oh, thank you. Sorry.
No, thank you. Okay, and I know Tom Kent was an alternate at the last hearing. I believe that Chairwoman Joyce is going to employ the Mullen Rule. So I'm not sure about the voting aspect, but any, any regards would be asking for his comments. Director Santucci Rossi, do you have any update or?
No, I was just going to say that Tom is, is, can obviously participate in the comments and, and ask questions.
Okay.
Who knows, maybe vote next time.
Thank you very much. Member Kent, do you have any comments on the application?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I thank everybody for the extensive back and forth with the town and the peer reviewer. It looks like the applicant is really responding and taking to heart the different comments that have been raised and, and proposing a, a model for a, a housing development that is close to the commuter rail and provides some of the walkability that we've been looking to support in Braintree and have not that many locations that really fit that mold as nearly as well as this one does. So I definitely appreciate the things that the team has done to provide that information and this project with the various updates. I had a couple of questions. I know Attorney Marinelli, you mentioned biking as part of the offset to some of the parking. I'm not sure who the best. I saw in the site plan, there's three bike racks. Is that a multiple bikes? Or is there a placement if there's quite a few of the renters that have bicycles to put them at the site anywhere?
Jesse, did you want to address that on the plans? Just for reference, Madam Chair, it's six fifteen dash eleven is the parking and bicycle requirements. So, you know, I think that Jesse can describe how we comply with that. Parking area, so, yeah.
Yeah, I believe the plans that have not only outdoor bicycle parking, but also indoor parking. I believe on the architectural plans, there's designated space shown for indoor bicycle parking as well. I don't have the exact count, but we can get that for you unless someone on the team has it on the top of their head.
We have a big space dedicated to that. It's covered right at the entry, and in fact, we're reusing some elements that are in the switch house currently that will function very well as bike storage. So we were there today trying to figure out all of the different elements that might be incorporated into the new development. And, you know, this works very well to store your bikes vertically.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Guess the only other question that I had in looking at the plans was as far as delivery trucks, Amazon trucks, that type of thing coming into the project, if there'd been thought of where that was going to happen. I mean, it looks like the turning radius is enough for them to get ahead, but, but where that was anticipated and how that might affect movement and in and out of the development.
No, it's a good comment. That was, I believe, one of the comments that came up. Maybe it was Melissa that had put in her report is how is the loading going to be accomplished at the site? Same thing when you have people moving in and out, you've got to think about where's a moving truck potentially going to be staged. We'll take another closer look at that and just see if we can designate a temporary space. We're probably not going to have a dedicated pull-off area. I'd hate to introduce a lot of impervious surface that would just be used for that purpose. I'm hoping we can just do a dual-purpose area already that's impervious, that we can utilize for that, that stills allow safety vehicles to get by and has no concern if you have somebody temporarily parked there. So we'll look at that and designate that on the plans better for the next go-around.
Yeah, thank you. Director Santucci Rossi, do you have anything else before I open it up to the public?
I did, Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to thank, obviously, all the board members for their comments, taking some, some diligent notes here. And also, I don't know if I would raise too concerned, but sensitive about the amount of parking that's being provided, and this is something that we constantly struggle with. We don't want traffic, we don't want cars, but we have projects with low parking requirements and not that much parking, and then we get concerned about the parking. So what comes first? The reduction in parking, the reduction in vehicle trips? They're somewhat, you know, tied together, and having a low parking ratio helps to limit the number of vehicles that are able to come and go, be accommodated on that site. I have engaged and have been involved with John Thompson, our town engineer, and actually was looking at the plans, the twenty-five percent drawings for Allen Street today, with the idea of not that Allen Street's going to become the parking lot for this particular area, but that are there any opportunity for some accommodations up on Allen Street? And something else that sort of kind of is, as I'm thinking about this and looking at it and sort of understanding, you know, we're just far enough away from the quote "pulse" of, of the landing that it's close enough that you can walk and get on the train and go down and get a beer or, or a haircut or whatever it is you're going to do down there. But it's far enough away that they're not sort of competing. You know, the landing has, Landing Fifty-Three has mixed use, there's retail in there. The municipal law has been seriously reduced. So you kind of never really know, you know, what is the parking problem there? Is it the residents? Is it the businesses and sort of people sort of competing? So one of the things that's nice about this particular location is it's far enough away that people aren't going to park up there and walk down to P S and get a nice coffee. But there's also an opportunity. The discussions related to Allen Street is making it a one-way away from Quincy Avenue. So there definitely is some opportunity, I think. I'm not an engineer, but looking at the plans, to have some type of cut-out parking, parallel-style parking that could not only benefit the residents on Allen Street. I'm sure the board members are familiar with the properties on the other side and the slopes and the driveways, and I'll describe those as difficult at best. So that is something that is, that is on my radar and something that I'm going to be discussing with John Thompson. So understanding sort of your comments, Member McComme, and, you know, comments that, you know, I've respectfully have heard for my entire career and just, you know, is there enough parking? And sort of how do we get that sweet spot where we're not overloading the riverfront and the resource area with pavement, when that could be grass and other things that will serve, serve the population equally as well and provide environmental benefits? So I think that we need to work with the applicant, and I will take some time looking at the site plan as well. Attorney Marinelli noted this morning that they're at fifty-six percent lot coverage, which is, you know, almost remarkable, when they can go up to eighty or ninety percent. So we get to the question, do we want more parking, less trees? Do we want less riverwalk more? So sort of where is that sweet spot? And I think that we should be able to work with the applicant and come up with something that is palatable. There might even be an opportunity for some spots that kind of function as both, with some interesting treatments with grass create and just really trying to, I think they really don't want to load this thing up with asphalt, and I, I commend them for that. But also sensitive to, to Member McComme's comments, and I think that we can work together to come up with something. I will note that, you know, and again, I, I, I say this respectfully, that given sort of the mix of units, and there are one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, but I would, you know, I would draw the board's attention to sort of what the incomes are to sort of qualify for those units. And that, you know, the likelihood of multiple, multiple vehicles, you know, when you get up into the higher incomes, there will be more vehicles because there is more money to purchase and lease those vehicles. And that sort of these households are on a much different style budget. And if somebody's going to be occupying a three-bedroom unit, it's likely, per D H C D's requirements, probably going to be a three- or four-bedroom household with, with children as well. So just a little bit of, I, I think, and again, I, just looking at the straight unit count, I think we need to dive one level deeper and sort of look at, you know, who's going to be living here? How are they going to be getting around? And how do we sort of balance the goals of the, of the, of the site, of the riverfront area and the parking area? And I will, I'll be looking at that as well, in looking for some creative solutions. And then whenever you're ready, Madam Chair, I do have those public, public comments as well.
Okay. Thank you. I see, I saw one of the, or you mentioned one was from Lisa Abbott, and I see she's on the line. So maybe it makes sense to read those at the end of the public comment?
Yeah, sure. I don't know if she plans on speaking tonight. She did send an email a couple of weeks ago, which I forwarded off to the board, probably the last week in, in August, when I returned from vacation. And that was shared with the board and the applicant. She has concerns about the views. I know the applicant team was, was looking at that and, and potentially putting together a response. I'm not sure if they have that for this evening, but nonetheless, I'm, I'm available to, to, to read those whenever you need me, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess while we're talking about it, might as well do it now. Thank you.
Okay. So Lisa Abbott did send an email to Ken, and her comment says, "Good evening. My husband Dennis and I would like to understand the impact of the development will have on our view of the river. We reside on Thayer Road hillside overlooking Allen Street and the river. We have full view six months of the year and a partial view the remainder of the year. Thank you for your consideration. Regards, Lisa."
Thank you. And mentioned the applicant team had already looked at that. Is there anybody?
I, I know that they have the original comments. Like I said, these comments we just got today. She had sent some comments back at the end of August. I'm not sure if that's ready to be discussed this evening. I would default to Attorney Marinelli.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can refer this to David Gamble and to James Carrico of Gamble and Associates. I would note that when the email was received, and we did receive it from the planning director, that the location of Thirty-Six Thayer is, as a matter of law, it's not a party in interest as defined in forty-eight, section eleven. Certainly, there, there is, you know, change in views. There's, there's changes that do occur with, with construction in the district like this, allowed construction, allowed density. But it is not per se a party in interest. It's not somebody that's directly across Allen Street. It's, it's a property that's removed beyond the first property on Allen Street and not a party in interest with presumed standing. As I pointed out earlier, the Landing District is a unique zoning district. It has significantly different purposes than the Thirty-Six Thayer location. I think that, you know, we've done the best we can in terms of designing aesthetically a, a product that would be feasible. You know, there's, there's really not much more we can do in terms of any view from afar that may be affected by the four stories, which is allowed. The project complies with the purposes of the district. Views are not, are not a protected interest under the Landing Commercial District, section six fifteen. And nonetheless, we have pretty modest density when you look at some of the other developments. And we, we have to achieve a feasibility density in order to, to work and construct at this challenging site. So again, you know, in summary, not a party in interest, Landing District being unique. And thirdly, not a protected interest under the ordinance itself, which has its purposes. Everything that we've discussed and that the planning director has discussed in her memo, which includes paramount, paramount, much-needed housing, provide housing for incomes at, at all levels. So that's, that's the response at this point.
I would also just add that it's, it's worth reclaiming what used to be on that site. And that the massing of the coal firing plant, which in fact was there for, you know, nearly a century, is, is in about the same location as our new building. So in fact, with the smokestacks and the override, the massing of this building, which granted has been demolished for a long time, and people wouldn't call it scale, was, was really significant on that site. So there's some amnesia that occurs over time when you realize what used to be there. And in fact, our, our new build is smaller than that as, as a whole of the top of the, of the building.
Thank you very much. That was, that was helpful, I thought. Director Santucci Rossi, do you want to read in the, the other email from Tom Bowes?
Yes, so, Mr. Bowes has a couple of questions. His first question is, based on the information, has the developer done any due diligence regarding this potential condition by a third-party consultant to do test borings and soil testing to eliminate the possibility of unwanted delays and cost overruns due to potential environmental contamination? That was the first question. And the second question, which is related, so I'll just say it now. Has there ever been an A U L placed on the property by D E P? And if so, has it been removed?
I can answer that. I'm not an L S P, but our office did do the environmental and helped oversee the environmental cleanup for the site. We did, I did see a report that stated essentially that the site was deemed clean by the D E P and was not given further restrictions in perpetuity on the site. So essentially, it was evaluated to have this type of use, a residential use with a potential for children on it. And there was no concern about the soils at the site that were in place as they were able to find them. That doesn't mean that at some point during construction, something else couldn't be revealed, given the, the age of the site. But they did a lot of exploratory work and everything that's known on the site prior that was a containment. It has been cleaned up. There are still remnants of old observation wells on the site, but none of them are designated to be remaining and having ongoing monitoring from them. So essentially, we're good to go once we start construction. There will be an L S P that will have to be engaged at certain points during the excavation of utilities and foundations and things like that, just to make sure that there's nothing as they're digging through the soil. But as of right now, there, there's nothing that they're aware of. Everything's been taken care of.
And, and just to confirm, Jesse, there is no A U L, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The third question, somewhat related. Has the developer ascertained the total cost of PCB and asbestos remediation at the site? And are they comfortable with those potential costs to move forward without any delay on the project? I think you just answered that.
I did. I believe that there was an analysis done on the existing building materials, because I, those obviously have to be demoed, but I believe it has to be updated. I think that that expires after so many years. Again, a little bit out of my expertise, but that does have to be done again and updated prior to the initiation of demolition. But I think the first screening revealed that there was nothing of concern, but it does have to be screened again.
Okay. Well, I think, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Moscato and his crew, but if that was, if it was like scary the first time, you would have probably backed off at that point, so.
Yeah, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
We found that out a while ago. Jesse's accurate.
Yes, thank you, Tim. Um, and a kind of a second part to that question, given the proximity of the river, has the developer sought any permits to raise the site beyond the current flood elevation? If so, how much fill would be brought onto the site and what is the impact to the residents' site of the project?
So we do have to bring some fill. It's not a net, um, reduction on the site. We're going to have to level off the parking in some regards to bringing it into ADA compliance and also just typical standard engineering practice. Um, however, it's not, we're not raising the sea walls. That's really what the water's coming over and breaching, or so we're not changing the flood elevation of the site. We're not, uh, modifying the sea walls to add resiliency to the site. Um, however, we are in a tidal river. It's not, uh, an inland river where you'd have to be sensitive to compensatory storage and impacting a budding properties or downstream neighbors, should you be filling any areas within the floodplain. Um, it's essential to, you know, putting in fill next to an ocean. You're not going to impact the level of the ocean. That's essential what we're dealing with here. So no issue with the amount of fill. Uh, we've already submitted to conservation. We've already submitted to D E P. As part of the conservation process, we've had our initial meeting with MEPA because we have an E N F filing. Uh, and no concerns are raised so far regarding the approach to our fill design.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Um, and then, um, there was another, uh, follow-up question, um, asking about the state and federal funding and does the town, um, benefit from any of that? And I, I mean, I think it would be um, sort of a partnership. Attorney Marinelli had spoke about that early on and, you know, uh, very competitive going for these different types of grants and sort of if you were looking for something, we would be supporting you and vice versa, and really just exploring any and all opportunity we can to upgrade and really improve this area um, with any kind of, uh, state and federal money associated with the floodplain, the riverfront and all these sort of restoration components of this development. I think it's important to note that, you know, this is, you know, the, the exterior features and amenities respectfully are as beneficial to the community, if not more um, than the units. So it's not, you know, there are several other public benefits and, and, um, you know, uh, achieving various goals. One of our goals is always to open up access to the river. Kelly Phelan in this office is, you know, it's basically her life mission. Um, and she's been pretty good at it, I have to add. Um, but it's nice to have a private developer, you know, including this, uh, in part of their submission as well.
Madam Chair, could I just address that as well?
Sure.
You know, when the landing was first, uh, redeveloped, there was, there was a P W E grant of about $2 million that went into, uh, sidewalks, lighting, um, the canoe path, benches, et cetera. Creating, so, so the, the infrastructure investment publicly always spurs, it, it certainly almost always spurs, uh, economic investment privately. Take a look at this site. You, you know, it, we, we're waiting hopefully for, for Allen Street improvements, but it's the, it's the private investment here of over $25 million plus the acquisition of 1.5. Uh, that, you know, is a tremendous boon to the town at a property which has no revenue generation right now. Uh, the, the municipal use is tax exempt. Uh, when we see developments that I've been a part of and the economic reports over the past couple of years, for example, 165 units of senior living producing a benefit of $350,000 net revenue. In another town, um, 270 units, the economic report is over $500,000 net revenue. 237 units, the economic report over 200,000. You know, these are economic reports that are associated with development that, and here, you know, one of the purposes is not only the, um, the economic impact on the property itself and the benefit to the town in new tax revenue, net tax revenue. Uh, and that's after deducting, you know, any school age children, et cetera. But it's also supporting the small businesses that are in the landing, creating paramount, much needed housing. So, um, you know, the economic benefits to the town, uh, when the question is asked, um, you know, I guess, why, why would the town apply for grants? Because it benefits the town. The project benefits the town.
Thank you. And Director, do you have any other things before?
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry. I was just looking at my email. Um, Ms., uh, Ms. Abbott, who is, is here this evening and can, um, raise her hand if she'd like and make these comments, but let me get to my email. Um, I don't even know what I did with it. Hold on one second. I'm sorry. Uh, my email. Okay. Um, so follow-up question, um, from, uh, Lisa Abbott, again, um, as we listen to the updates from the development team, we have additional questions, concerns in addition to our view, which could potentially impact the value of our property. Noise impact from construction, we are directly above the river. Level of traffic increase on our street as we assume Allen Street will not be usable for quite some time. Allen Street's a high traffic cut through from Quincy Ave to Sharon Front Street. So, um, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jesse on the construction one, but the, the town is actually the one that has been and will be doing the project on Allen Street. So that's a town project. Uh, I'm sure there'll be signage. I'm sure there'll be all kinds of, you know, detours and different things to make sure that, um, the impacts, but that is not, the reconstruction of Allen Street and that project is not, um, the developer's responsibility to, um, sort of mitigate and that project predates this project. And frankly, you know, if we didn't have COVID and everything, it probably already would have been done. But, um, you know, that, that put a big halt on a lot of different things. I'll default to Jesse, um, or, or the applicant team on the, um, the question about noise.
Well, I would think for construction, we're gonna, we have to fall within local standard building ordinance as far as, uh, construction hours, what days, and I don't believe the applicant's asking to work outside of standard construction hours or days right now. So I, I wouldn't expect anything beyond that. Duration of the project, we haven't honed in on that yet. Um, but obviously we have to be in compliance. It, it could take, you know, a year and a half. Who knows? Kind of throwing a dart at a dartboard at this point. I don't think I could answer on the noise being other than what's typically part of an ongoing construction project.
On the traffic, we do have a traffic report, um, in the record. And our traffic expert, uh, Jeff Dirk was here the last time, who the town is familiar with. And the, the report, um, that's on file presents, uh, less than 30, uh, weekday, uh, new morning peak hour trips and, and the same in the evening. So, you know, that's about one trip, one new trip every two minutes. So it's, it's very modest. Um, and, uh, basically, uh, the report provides that that the, the, the project is accommodated on within the existing road network.
Thank you. And if anybody else in the public has a comment, they can raise their hand. Or they, if you're on the phone, do star nine to indicate that there is anything that you'd like to comment on with respect to the application. For, and again, this is 4:44 Ellen.
Okay. So I just, Madam Chair, if I may, um, if any of the board members have any other questions or comments, um, if they could reach out to me directly, I do, did take extensive notes, um, this evening. I didn't have a lot of, uh, questions from the last meeting. So anything that any of the board members have, um, I'll probably going to be coordinating with the applicant over the next couple of weeks on making sure that everything has been responded to appropriately. Um, and that any outstanding questions get resolved. So if you have anything, um, if you want to throw it in now, great. If not, please reach out to me um, at the office.
Thank you. And, and obviously based on this, there's some updates to the plans that are ongoing and different work that's taking place. Does the applicant request a continuance at this point?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. And October 12th is the date that binds efficient?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Six fifteen, Madam Chair.
What was it?
I'm sorry, six fifteen.
Oh, six fifteen, October 12th. Okay. Do we have a motion to continue the hearing to six fifteen on October 12th?
Don't move.
Thank you, Member Downey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now vote in favor of the motion, Clerk McCamey?
Yes.
No, Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove? You're on mute, Member Grove?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Thank you. And Member Kent?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you all for your time and attention.
And thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
See you October 12th.
Good night.
Okay, that concludes our public hearings this evening. We have some old and new business to jump back to at this juncture. Uh, the next on that list is a discussion over in-person meetings. I know we've continued via Zoom with renovations in the Cahill Auditorium. Director, do you have any update on?
Uh, that, that's done. Uh, it actually looks absolutely amazing. So I will, um, that was probably the quickest redo of an auditorium I've ever seen, but it really, really looks great. Our facilities staff, um, has been working diligently and, and actually has spent quite a bit of time in our office as well. Uh, any members that haven't come by, I think most of you have been by and seen, um, the office, but we've done quite a bit here. Um, and, and sort of moved people around and spaced things out. So, um, yeah, that was kind of the reason why we stayed. And then, you know, it's, it's sort of a mixed bag. Some board members and some of the other boards aren't interested in getting back. I mean, I, I would default to the board members. If they want to continue with Zoom, that's fine. Uh, as you know, we have the, uh, authorization from the legislature, I believe till April, uh, of next year. So I would default to the board members. If they're comfortable on Zoom, we'll continue that way. The only reason I ask is because we're getting prepared to do our legal notices for October and we just need to know, uh, how to advertise those appropriately. So I would default to the, uh, the preference of the board members, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask each of the board members if they have a preference. Member McCamey?
I, I don't have a preference, but what I would, uh, maybe ask the director is, didn't seem like our October agenda is, is that big? Um, I'm just thinking if it isn't that big, maybe we just keep it on Zoom.
Uh, for October, we'll have, uh, Allen Street is continued. Um, then we have, uh, Mr. Mai at 300 Quincy Ave. He'll be there as well. And then the new project that came in, as, as we talk about our riverfront, um, Kelly Phelan has submitted her, uh, grading permit, uh, floodplain, excuse me, floodplain application, site plan review for Middle Street Woods, uh, for her trail. Um, so another exciting project. So, you know, not huge, regular. I don't anticipate anything else coming in. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to get to some as-built and some smaller items. Um, but that's, that's what we have right now, Member McCamey.
Okay, again, I'm, I'm indifferent.
All right, thank you. And Member Downey, did I hear a rumor that you are leaving us also?
There are rumors that are not exaggerated to that effect.
That was going to be the grand finale.
Oh, yeah. I apologize for getting it out there.
I was going to be lifted out by helicopter.
He will disappear by eight thirty.
Yeah, I, I won't, I won't comment on my preference.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. And Member Grove, do you have a preference?
Not in particular. It, it may be just wiser to keep it on Zoom before able to keep it through April, just to see if anything reoccurs with the COVID.
Okay. All right. And Member Kent, do you have a preference?
Um, slight preference for in-person and masked, but, uh, you know, if the, uh, keeping an eye on the numbers and how we're doing here in the town.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm somewhat indifferent also. Have, in some aspects grown to be quite fond of the Zoom presentations and being able to really hone in on the plans, although you, there is a part that you lose of public participation. Uh, on one hand, there's more people I think who might come to the Zoom, but they might be less likely to speak. So I, I kind of agree with everybody else that, at least for October, keep it virtual and then
Okay.
see where we're at after that.
Yep, we'll have it on the agenda every month and just continue to ask people and any concerns or, you know, if any of the members want to talk offline about, you know, in person or whatever, I'm available. Um, like I said, some of the other boards, they're concerned and they're staying on. I think the only board, uh, well, Conservation went live and then they went back. And Connor's group, uh, zoning board, they've been in person. Um, but they get a small, it's, it's depends. You know, we have bigger projects, you know, the applicant team you saw tonight was just, you know, them alone's 15 people. So we'll keep it on as an agenda item and we'll, we'll continue to, you know, follow up with the board members. Um, so we also have the master plan update, which is really no update. Um, so as the members know, we're, we're going to keep this on the agenda. Um, we, I, I need to, um, reach out to the consultants. I have not had a chance to do that yet. And ask them simply, I know some of them, so it's helpful, you know, why didn't you respond? You know, is there a problem with the solicitation? Is there a problem with, you know, the invite, you know, what is, what is the reasoning? The R F P that we issued was, was, was volumous. It was, it was in detail. It was very, um, you know, full of a whole bunch of things that represent Braintree and, you know, that could have been something that was a little bit overwhelming potentially. You know, there's different styles of doing solicitations. This is what I want. I want a master plan, period. And then there are solicitations that tend to get, uh, a little more detailed than ours was on the, on the very detailed side of things. So, um, I want to try to get feedback from the professionals because, um, we want to put this back out and we want to get a consultant and we want to do this right, um, this department and the administration. So that's essentially the update. Again, we'll keep this on the agenda. If any, any board members, as always, have any questions, um, I'm always available.
Okay, thank you. And then we have approval of the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes for May 11th. I was not at that meeting. Um, so I know I can't vote on it. Should I still introduce it?
Yeah, you can introduce it, Madam Chair, and then we'll take, um, a vote of the, the four members that we have.
Okay, okay, great. So the mi- the minutes for May 11th, 2021, the planning department had sent around. If, is there any comments from the members of the board, starting with Member McCamey?
Uh, no comments.
Member Downey?
No comments.
Member Grove?
No comments.
Member Kent?
No comments.
All right. And is there a vote to approve the minutes?
Don't move. Motion to approve.
Thank you. I said vote. Okay, thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. And a vote in favor of approving. Start with Member McCamey?
Yes.
Okay. And Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
All right. And I'll abstain from that one. Okay. And then the meeting minutes for July 13th that were sent around to the members. Were there any comments on those? Member McCamey?
Uh, no comments.
Member Downey?
None.
Member Grove?
No comments.
Member Kent?
No comments.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And vote in favor, Member McCamey?
Yes.
Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. And I did speak with Chair Joyce earlier about the news about Member Downey, and she wanted to make sure to express thanks and best wishes. It's been
Very nice.
He's enjoyed working with you and I know the last She's enjoyed working with you and I, nonetheless, I don't know, must have been two, three, three meetings that I've been on. Always had a lot of good comments, so I'm sure that was continued for a long time before. Best of luck to you. She definitely wanted me to pass that on.
And Madam Chair and to Member Downey, from the staff and the department, we're, you know, sad to see you go. Come by anytime. We will not miss dropping off your packet and almost getting hit on off on the street. But that we won't miss. But I, and I apologize because we had the agenda sort of ready to go when I had this conversation with Member Downey. So we will miss you. Come back anytime, you know, sometimes to be a, to be a board member and to do it right takes time. And sometimes life, you know, has other things going on that take priority. So whenever anything, you know, changes and moles, please, you know, we're always looking for good people to participate. We have so many boards here and we're continually looking for residents. So I want to thank you for being awesome to the staff, myself, Connor, Ken for his short stint, and Louise as well, and we'll miss you. So please keep in touch.
Likewise, thank you all very much. Very professional group you are. It's really proud to be on the board. I used to meet Louise at the library to sign things, so she works on Saturdays. But, you know, like I said, I'll be around. I'm in town and, you know, maybe I'll be back someday. Who knows?
We'll be here.
Yeah, good luck. Good luck, Jim.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
All right, and thank you all for bearing with me today as I try to remember the steps to go through.
Great job.
Good job.
Great job.
All right, a motion to close the hearing, close the meeting?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And votes in favor, Member McCamey?
Yes.
All right, Member Downey?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Take care, Jim.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.